Tonight, it's not drastically different, but a little bit different. And so, there would be a little bit of a housekeeping issue here, based on what the Canoots are proposing now. And that would be that we would, basically, if we, let me see if I can get the map up here. If we look at the map on page eighty-eight, they are proposing that it would still be, basically, the same development, but they'd like to eventually replat this property to have two separate parcels. And so, the parcel for the townhome development would be approximately four acres. And then, a two-acre parcel that would front on Swan and Harbin, there at the very corner, would remain B2 for retail use. And so, originally, it was presented as a mixed use of townhomes, residential area plus commercial. We are now looking at possibly, again, a replat in the future, if we can get the approval on the PD for that four-acre lot. So, the retail part of that would come later, on the very corner property that would maintain the B2 zoning. And so, if I may, back up to the staff report now. You may recall that we've had one similar case. This is, again, back on page eighty-one. We had one case in the past where we were doing a, the applicant had actually submitted a replating request before they had requested the rezoning. And by ordinance, we have to consider the rezoning first. And so, in that particular case, we approved the re, or the commission approved the rezoning, and it was based on the condition that a replat would be submitted within thirty days. And if the commission chooses to move forward with this, staff would recommend that that same type of condition be placed on the approval. Mr. Canoots, both Mr. Canoots have indicated to me that they can have that replat to us quickly. And so, having a thirty-day window on that would not be an issue. And yet, it would still allow us to get in front of council and get their approval on your recommendation, either for or against, whatever the decision may be, at the council meeting before they actually had to submit that replat. So, that would be built into that timeline as well. The current zoning for this entire parcel is B2, future land use is commercial. I have the PD zoning description there, starting on page eighty-two, for your review. And then, as we continue through the staff report, we, of course, will have the same maps that we've had. You're familiar with this from the conceptual plan. And we have received no letters in favor and no letters in opposition. On page eighty, I'm sorry, ninety, we have a map of the subject site, and it shows that there is water on Swan Street, the twelve-inch main. Based on the topography of this property, the connection to sewer will likely have to go to the west, towards three-seventy-seven. There's a crossing issue to get to the sewer to the south. And then, it would require an onsite, basically, a pump to get to the corner of Swan and Harbin because of the topography. It would require a lift station. So, that has been discussed with the Canoots, and they are fully aware that that would be a challenge for this site as we get into the actual development review. We do have the list of addresses there on page ninety-one. And then, we have the application that you've seen in the past. And moving to page ninety-four is the development site plan. And we have worked very closely with the Canoots and their engineer. And we have here a plan that we think meets all of the requirements for a PD approval. The one missing component that Mr. Taylor Canute is able to speak to, not to tonight, would be the development schedule itself. That did not make it into the packet before tonight's meeting, but I know that it's something they're looking at very closely and already have a skeleton schedule for discussion tonight. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions here, Steve? Okay, Mr. Canute, would you like to go ahead?
Sure. I appreciate being back here in front of all of you and presenting what I think is a little bit more of a defined plan than we had two months ago. We, since this last meeting, we've had several conversations with our engineer, Jacob Martin, specifically Tao Fillingham, who's our head engineer on this, and dealt with some of the underlying issues we thought this development has had. And I think we've done a pretty good job of addressing all of that. The only difference between this plan and the one you were presented with two months ago is we've actually lowered the unit count. We were at sixty-two units two months ago, and we've actually lowered that to fifty. We've eliminated, if you recall, on the original plan, had a cul-de-sac off of Swan Street, kind of coming down to the south. We've eliminated that, and we added a small amount of commercial frontage on Swan there. So, we've increased the size of the commercial parcel, which, again, this parcel is six-point-nine acres. It's originally zoned B2, and that's what's called for in the future land use map. So, we've lowered the unit count, increased our commercial space, and I think it actually works in our favor because instead of having a roughly one-point-five acre commercial space, which is, after talking to some of the folks that we have had interested in that parcel, it's kind of, it's a little too large for one parcel, and it's just, it's a little too small to be divided into two. So, I think having, I think we call for two-point-six on here now, that could potentially allow us to accommodate two, possibly three users, as opposed to one large user trying to squeeze two people on there. So, commercially and for future land use, I think this plan is more in line with what the city would like to see. In terms of our development, I think having one thoroughfare, both on Harbin and exiting on Swan, gives you two points of ingress and egress. It eliminates some of the engineering nightmares of a cul-de-sac in there and fire lanes and whatnot. So, we're very happy with the way this plan has kind of evolved in the last two months. There's a lot more detail on this plan showing lot counts. It calls out more of a landscaping plan, monument signs, drainage easement, things like that. So, we're pretty confident we have a much more thorough plan here. So, we, going forward with this, to what Steve was saying, with, we've already submitted the preliminary documents to go for replat. That was always our intention. Right now, it's, it's just planted as one six-point-nine acre parcel, but the intention was always to have kind of townhomes on one side. And this transitioning from our original hotel plan, we need some sort of an anchor tenant to kick off the commercial property that sits on the corner and adding fifty townhome units, which there seems to be a large demand for in town. And these would be great first-time homebuyer opportunities. And again, we're selling the individual lots and townhomes to purchasers. We're not renting them. This isn't going to be some college, you know, party scene, so to say. I think it'll have a pretty minimal impact in terms of traffic and, I guess, impact to the residential that's in the surrounding area. So, we're pretty happy with this plan, and we've had a staff-level meeting addressing a lot of their concerns with the first plan. And there's a lot of unknowns that we've since covered with both the city engineer and Steve and the fire marshal and Harold Sandell, the building official. So, we, from our standpoint, I think we've got a lot of our bases covered. And I would ask you if you guys have any questions or concerns to fire away. I'd love to.
Steve mentioned the time, time plan, your timing plan on, in terms of when all of this would get going?
Yes. So, with the adjusted plan that we have here, eliminating that cul-de-sac makes things much simpler from a development standpoint. I think phasing-wise, we were looking at two, maybe three phases before. Our intention is to kind of do this all in one phase, do all the improvements up front, put the road in, all the utilities, everything you see on that, called out on that plan. And then, basically, I think we can have all of these fifty units constructed in eighteen to twenty-four months, tops. And that's based on what we know we've done in the past in town here and the projects we have going now. I think we have the bandwidth to do fifty units in a year and a half to two years, tops. And I think the way the demand is for not only single-family housing, which this technically is, they're single-family attached housing, I think our price point is perfect for anyone trying to come here to get a job at the university or any of the manufacturing jobs that are open. I think it's very affordable, and it's something that would allow some good growth to come into the city.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Have you discussed any of the drainage issues with the Fort Worth and Western Railroad?
So, kind of similar to a question earlier, actually, our drainage plan, or it's all preliminary at this point, because we're just sort of at the zoning part of this, but we've actually, since the last plan, we've expanded. Our architects are very good at drainage problems, and we've actually expanded off the original plan you saw two months ago, called for a ten-foot, ten-foot drainage easement that goes along the back. We're still continuing that plan, except we've now expanded that to be a fifty-foot-wide drainage easement. That is going to be a grass bottom, so it will look like a natural area. But based on the calculations of Jacob and Martin, it is more than enough to handle any impact from our site, plus what is currently coming from the university and the culverts that are down at the, I guess that would be the southeast part of the property, where the railroad is.
Correct.
He's made all his assumptions based on the type of culverts that are there, and there won't be any sort of, no impact negatively affecting what is currently there.
Okay. Because, as you might imagine, right-of-way integrity is a big issue with railroads.
Yes. And I know railroads are not always the quickest and easiest entities to deal with, so, and our engineer is well aware of that.
Okay.
So, again, he's been focused on keeping the impact of our development in mind when dealing with what's already in place there in terms of the corner of the property.
I have a question, kind of for Steve first. So, just so I'm understanding, the P, the plan development, right? All we're going to do is make it a zone, but then we'll come back with final plans of what it all would look like and run through.
Correct.
So, this is just, hey, we're okay with it being a PD, bring us a plan.
Well, the, the development plan is basically what we're looking at here. And so, the ordinance is very specific about what we have to bring forward to you for consideration. So, we, we met with the Canoots and their engineer and had them put on, on this, this site plan, everything that, of course, my computer just went to sleep, but things like lot dimensions, where the monument signs would go, what, where the landscaping would be. This particular site, I believe we had a calculation on how much landscaping would be on the, on the property.
Thirty-four percent.
Thirty-four percent, is what I recall. So...
Yeah, just all the PDs are presented so, so many different ways. The reason I ask, is now the question for you. You're going to, you said you're going to sell individual lot, like lot seventeen, for instance, right?
To an individual person?
Yes. And part of a PD, depending on what we prove or don't prove, would be how much masonry that's going to be, how much wood that's going to be, all these things. How are you going to, where's that dictated? And where is, you're going to sell a house to a person with basically three options or four options, or, that's where I'm a little, because you're selling the lot, but it's already going to be pre-built, or what?
No. So, our plan is, in terms of architecture, and I had a, our rendering, we only have two, two-floor plans that are going to be built under fifty units. The end units are two-car garage units. The interior units are all the same, one-car garage units, both two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. And we had a rendering of what the front elevation will look like, again, very similar to what we did over here on North Floral Street. We, as the developer, we are going to be building these and selling them for individual use. So, if you are a potential customer, you come and pick out what you, you would like and, you know, sign a contract. We build it on, we're going to be building a lot on spec up front, but ultimately, the customer will have their pick of where, where they want to be. In terms of architecture and everything, we don't have covenants and restrictions in place. I believe that all comes after the use is approved. We're trying to get our plan development approved because, like I said, we already have the preliminary replat submitted, because our intention was always to take the commercial frontage and keep it almost separate from the plan development. So, we're trying to get approved, the townhome use on that four-point-three acres that surrounds the, what will be two-point-six acres of commercial.
That's why I'm confused. He's saying that, maybe I'm rephrased, so, we're approving this, but then there's, is there anything that's ever going to come back to us to say, this is what it's going to look like? Or is this it?
Uh, to, well, and I know it's somewhat of an informal answer, but the design you're looking at right now is what we will be moving forward with, with, you know, that there might be a tree subject to change five feet this way or that way. There might be a certain location of a street light moving a couple of feet. But what you have there is a pretty defined plan of what that development is going to look like.
But it doesn't have masonry requirements or anything like that, and that's part of a PD. Part of a PD, it's clearly stated it'll be in an R3 or an R1 what you have to do. That's the advantage of having a PD. You get special benefits, but part of the special benefits, as we were talking earlier, is we get to say, yeah, but we want to make them all brick. And so, therefore, you say, well, that can work for me financially, and we worked that out. That's part of the deal with the PD. And so, that's not in here. So, if this is the minimum requirements, I'm, I get it.
Well, again, I think all of that, all of those determinations come after, we have, I believe the state, if I'm understanding correctly, the stage we're at is to get the use of the PD, the actual zoning ordinance that is going to be written, the PD approved by planning, gunning, or recommended to go to council. And then, after that becomes the design phase with engineering and design plans, all of that, upon approval of the use that we're trying to propose over here.
So, we want to see it, is what you're saying. We want to see it again.
Well, you're, again, we're saying, we're going around. You're saying that that'll all happen after you do this. But I just asked Steve, and I said, will this come back to us with all those masonry requirements? And he said, no.
So, tonight, and we've tried to, we've discussed this, and we've tried to be very prepared in the submittal for you tonight. Those are the conditions that you can place on the PD approval, and then the council can consider before they authorize the PD approval. And so, tonight would be basically a workshop to allow those to be determined based on what the commission may want. One example on the site plan is this fencing that we could use. The fencing between the proposed B2 site and the PD for the townhome, they are proposing that to be a wooden fence. He has a rendering from the conceptual plan, and I'm sorry I didn't get that into the, into this staff report, but do you have that rendering with you by chance? If I can get it, on the previous, the previous meeting, I have that available, I can pull that up. You may recall that they had a rendering that they had submitted.
Didn't we see an elevation, a front elevation?
A front elevation. I believe it.
Yeah. I thought we did, too.
Although it may not have made it into this submission that we received today, I think that Mr. Canute is able to define what those structures are going to look like as far as finish out. Part of the PD also is that the dimensions that are reflected on this PD show that there's a lot width on average of seventeen feet, I believe. Is that correct? And so, those are all things that would have to be discussed and considered and taken into consideration for your approval for the PD before it goes to council for action. So, Mr. Canute, I think the hesitation here is, is what I've tried to communicate, is that before the, the commission is going to be comfortable granting a PD, they want to have answers to questions that we'd normally not see until we got into the development stages and review of those building plans and, and the actual site plan itself for the development in regards to drainage and things of that nature. So, it does change the approach to some degree. And so, I think the questions that you have, as far as what that will look like, is, is what the purpose tonight is for, is to make sure that we get those defined and that they are brought to the council with that definition.
Yeah, I, I'm with you.
What are the questioning, are they, are they hypothetical questions?
And again, I could be, well, that's the problem with PD. And this is why I'm a little perplexed, because we say that we're, it's a preliminary thing, but it says we're voting on it today. And that means we have to move forward with council with it. And a PD, again, is going to say, this can, and you say it comes later, but then when I ask if it's going to come back to us, you say, no, because we're passing the PD. So, this could be a tin building, as far as we know.
Well, I'm coming through.
Just introduce it two months ago. Well, I think I can, I, we, this is, and I'd be happy to email this to everybody, this is the rendering we brought to our meeting two months ago. And the building construction is on the exterior, we are not proposing any masonry on it. It's going to be a combination of board and battening siding and lap siding, cement-based, hardy-based, or LP, similar product. The, we can submit this to the record as what, this, the architecture's finished. Fred Parker's office here in Stevenville has laid out the four- and six-unit buildings, the floor plans, the elevations. And we submitted that at our, at our last meeting. As far as the exteriors, like I said, we are not planning on any masonry on the exteriors. We're planning for, we're proposing masonry-type siding, combination of board and battening and LP. And that's simply to keep the price point where we, factoring your development cost, your building cost, we want to make these affordable. There's no first-time home-buying opportunities available in this town right now, other than what we just completed. And because of that, that's why we've gone from a complete commercial seven acres to making our anchor tenant a residential component, so that we can try to jumpstart, not just this two-point-six acres we have, but the five acres across the street. We've tried everything we possibly can for two and a half years to bring commercial development to the site, and we haven't been able to do it because we don't have an anchor tenant. We thought we had the hotel and convention center, that went up in smoke. We've had tremendous success on the first-time homebuyer market, and that's where we're actually trying to bring our price point down, keep it below two-hundred thousand here, to attract more first-time homebuyers here. In doing that, we have to keep our exterior product or our materials to where the price point, it, it works out so we can sell these. It's not anything that we're not doing over off of Fairway North right now, or North Fairway, whatever that is, what we did over here. The only difference between this and what we did over there is we eliminated the masonry. So, other than that, I, if there's any other specific questions that you have, we'd be happy to answer them. I'm not trying to make little of this, but it's not that complicated. We're not building, you know, commercial.
I just, for sure, you can go to council all you want, but I strongly disagree with that. You say it's not that complicated. A PD is completely different than any other zoning.
I understand that.
Completely different. And it has about a thousand different variations. So, when you come in here and you say that to us, that's like, hey, man, just do your job and vote yes, or whatever.
That's not at all what I'm saying.
If I can address that, that's not at all, that's not what we're asking at all. We've, we've come in here and we're, we're just asking, we are building, what I've said multiple times, is a very similar product, minus maybe some stone than what we built over on North Floral Street, that, I think, case in point, that, again, we are not building rental units, because I know they're in town, even though there's a need for that, there is, some people are not too happy, a lot of the population's not too happy with just building more and more apartments. We've been trying to build a product to sell, to help grow the town, which I think we have, over half of those units over there are from people that are coming from out of town. So, what we're simply trying to do is recreate that, make it even more affordable. So, again, it's, it's a large benefit to the town, and we're not trying to make light of, we're not trying to propose something that we're going to, we're not going to make it out of tin or, you know, steel or whatever, rusty iron. We're building a very similar product to what our company has been building since we started building residential.
Agree with you a hundred percent. You're probably the most trustworthy guy in the history of the world. It doesn't say that.
But you just asked him, he just answered.
Oh, you, okay, an answer and a plan are two different things. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Okay. Thank you. I think we, I think we got it. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing. I can see that there's nobody here, but I'm going to open a public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor of this rezon request? Anybody wish to speak against? Closing the public hearing, commissioners, can I get a, a motion so that we can discuss?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I need a motion.
I move to recommend to council to deny case PD two-zero-two-one-zero-zero-one.
Sounds like that motion's going to die for lack of a second. Now, because it has died for lack of a second, doesn't it automatically go forward with, recommend with approval?
No.
Or do we do?
I believe we have to take action, just because the first action didn't.
So, we, okay.
I have to have some kind of recommendation.
Well, in the last city council meeting, that's what they did.
The motion died, and the other motion automatically, the other option automatically.
Automatically carries with a vote, right? Because that's what you did in the last city council. So, since that motion died, then automatically, this goes forward with a recommended council to approve, correct?
Yeah, I did you a favor.
You just simplified that. So, gentlemen, this is going forward to council with a recommendation for approval of this rezon. With, ho, ho, wait a minute, because we need that, we need that extra wording in there, right, for the replat. So, maybe we do need a motion, because we want the replat within thirty days, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I think the, this project, based on the, what we discussed as far as the changes from the original discussion, without that, we cannot really move forward. We would have to, to, basically, in my opinion, it would be for the entire site. And in this case, they are wanting to maintain the B2 zoning for that very corner piece.
So, so we do need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Right. All right. Gentlemen.
Then, which, which proposal are we then making a motion on and voting?
As stated, with the, we are looking at two-zero-two-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-one, commercial business to plan development with adding, so look on page eighty-one. So, we want to approve with the condition that a replat will be completed, completed within thirty days of the final action.
Okay.
And on that replat, is that where we're going to see, like, the list of building materials and?
We are not going to see that.
No.
That was what the whole discussion was, was that we have heard everything we're going to hear.
Mr. McCall, if you gave us a list of a hundred questions, right, by tomorrow morning, we'll have a hundred answers for you.
I'm not a builder. I need to know what you're going to put on a piece of property in the city of Stevenville. It's either going to protect or unprotect people's property values. That's why people live in a city, not in the county, because we have zones, and zones are here to protect property values. That's what zoning is for. We don't have that, and it's fine. We'll vote, and I'll vote no, and everybody else will vote yes, and...
It'll go to council, and council makes the final decision.
That's right. It's just a recommendation.
But I would suggest, when you bring it forth to council, bring every last picture, everything you've got, the whole shebang. All right. So, gentlemen, may I get a motion? I can't make a motion.
I recommend to council that they approve PD twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-one with the thirty-day.
That replat will be completed.
That a replat will be completed within thirty days of the final action to approve.
All right. Brian made the motion?
I'll second.
Oh, thank God. Thanks, guys.
There you go.
Okay. Do we need to discuss, or are we just ready to vote? All right. Anything?
I would just like to say, thank y'all for coming to the city of Stevenville to help develop our community. I know there's some concern with some open-ended nature of this tonight, but I do believe y'all will do a great job, and I thank you for that.
Yes. This is, in a way, has to do with y'all. It has to do with our own systems, and y'all are caught in the middle. So, it has nothing to do with y'all.
Absolutely nothing with y'all, because you are great for this community.
Appreciate it.
And we enjoy you being here, and we're not trying, we're not trying to put a damper on what you're doing.
And every time we drive by your place, we go, that looks good.
Don't walk away with that opinion that we're becoming...
Seriously, where it comes from, there's a, there's a plan development that got passed through here, I'll be, a full disclosure of my concern, that not sure how, or if we couldn't envision what it was going to be, and ended up being, ended up being something way, way, something that we didn't think it was going to be, because we didn't have the ability to envision it. And so, that's where the concern is, and it's talked about continually around town. And so, that's where it's...
Just a little gun shy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We understand, we don't, we got thick skin, so we're, trust me. We, we have, we have to build a product that will sell. So, we build some monstrosity, I know it's going to be, it's not conducive to what we're trying to do, so.
But from what I have seen of your, of your work, it's, it's spot-on excellent for this community, so.
We really appreciate that.
But maybe, and this is separate from the motion... But maybe, and this is separate from the motion, but maybe we need to address some of these concerns later, you know, workshop or something, so...
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this replat with, oh, no, approval of this rezone to, uh, plan development with the condition that a replat will be completed within 30 days of the final action to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those approved, uh, those?
No. Aye, nobody no.
Those of, he says no. Okay, we're good. So, it'll move forward to council with a recommendation to approve. You do this whole song and dance in front of council, and we'll go from there. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for your coming. I know, coming, I know, was a long, long night. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so now we are down to the, uh, work session. So do we need to adjourn, or do we do the work session within?
Move to adjourn.
We just stay in to do the work session?
We have to leave the meeting and then open back into a work session.
If he sits on the agenda, it's hard enough.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
We have to sit down for a meeting, be able to have a work session. That's a real work session.
We can vote on this, yeah?
The whole thing, yeah, scrap it.
We can't take action on this, though, right? Sir? We can't take action on this, right? I mean, we can discuss, but we can't take action.
Uh, recommendation by council.
Recommendation to council.
We can do that? Okay, okay.
So Steve, you wanna go ahead and explain?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, you just kinda opened this up with a little bit of background.
Wait, go, wait, go, Al. It used to be like three months, six months process.
We recently had a, a case come before the commission regarding a particular use for a property that was zone B1. That particular use was only authorized in industrial zones. The commission moved to deny that request, and then council also denied the request. During that meeting, it was discussed with, by the commission that maybe some of these permitted uses needed to be explored, and then the council fully agreed. And so, uh, last night at a council work session, uh, the city council requested that the P&amp;Z commission look at some of these permitted uses and try to bring a recommendation back to them on some, any changes that you feel are necessary or that you would recommend. The council is recognizing that this is quite the undertaking. There's 175 permitted uses roughly in the code of ordinances, and they're distributed, those are amongst several different zoning districts. And so what staff has done is we have placed those permitted uses into a table format and then listed each district to the side, so you can see where that permitted use is approved. Some are approved in multiple districts, some are only approved in one district. The council did ask that we take just five and act on those immediately. And certainly, two of those that we feel the council expressed needed to be looked at with some staff input would be the tattoo shops. The second one, of course, we have a similar use in personals, businesses, personal service businesses such as salons and boutiques across the city that do semi-permanent makeup. Those artists are licensed by the same people as, the same regulatory agency as tattoo artists. They are licensed and regulated by the same group. And so they are, uh, a, a use that is across the city, not just industrial use, but yet do, uh, a different type of tattooing, so to speak. It doesn't go as deep into the skin, but it's still an intradermal coloring of the skin. So, uh, with that, we have the table that, that Stacy just distributed to you for your consideration. I've also, uh, with the help of our GIS analyst, we've played, placed some maps for your review, uh, in your packet. And basically, that's just to let you see where each of those zoning districts fall across the city. So you can look at that and, and see exactly where the industrial zonings are across the city when you want to consider a permitted use in a separate district perhaps. So, um, they are separate maps, and you can, if we wanna consider, for example, a tattoo shop going into a B1 district, then we can look at that B1 map and see where all across the city those may fall. Hope I've, uh, explained the, the, uh, the scope of this project. Uh, there's no real, uh, goal as far as how quickly we move through these. We do wanna address the ones that we think are, uh, high importance right now, with the understanding that the comprehensive plan will be looked at again in the very near future, and a lot of this work will probably be incorporated into that review. So, uh, the, the basis for tonight is to take a quick look at those two, and then, I'm sure, I have three additionals, uh, if, if we have time to move through those.
So this is to move, to, to determine where else they should be? We're not considering, like, a conditional use?
The conditional use, I think, is merited discussion, but one that was basically, we were asked to look at approving in different districts.
Okay, okay. So, um, for the makeup tattoo, what would, does that, what, what would that be listed on here? Or nothing, it doesn't exist, right?
So it would be under personal services.
Personal services?
Personal service shop.
Personal service shop, beauty barber shop, that?
Where is that? And the like.
Page two, about oh, four fifths of the way down.
Okay, so personal service shop, which, right now, exists almost everywhere.
Yes, except for B4, what?
What is B4?
B4 is a, if you look at the map, on the top of each, uh, top right-hand corner of each map has a description of how to zone it.
Can you pull that map up for us, please?
B4 is...
Which one?
Show on the zoning for B4.
B4 is alcohol-serving.
Yes, I believe it's what we wanted.
Well, the private clubs, so it would be like a, like a golf or?
Well, the golf course and fraternal organizations such as Kiwanis or the Moose.
It's page 98.
Something like that.
That doesn't seem like it needs to be there then, personal service, but why not in industrial? Just because we have a lot of weird places zoned industrial, like a lot of Washington is zoned industrial.
Things out, too.
Yeah, but I, my, my thing is, let's make it broader, let's put it, let it go anywhere.
I can't see putting a beauty shop there with a tattoo bar.
Just out of clarity, what exactly is B3?
B3 is your central business district, which is basically the center of the city.
So DT is?
DT is downtown.
So there's an inside-inside, so DT must be the center, so to speak? And B3 is basically the red zone district or brick district, for lack of a better example?
Wait a minute, red, red light district.
Downtown is the, basically, the core of the city, and B3 is a little extension outside of that.
The thing is, is like, um... There, there's a lot of stuff on Washington that is zoned industrial.
Madam Chair, I think maybe I can provide some clarification on that personal services. The way that, keep in mind that what kinda prompted this was the tattoo artist wanting to open in a B1 district. He could not because he did not have zoning for that.
Right.
Yet, we know that personal service salons provide that type of service, and they're all across the city.
Right.
So, I, I think maybe the driving question would be, do we want a tattoo shop to have a similar, um, opportunity as we do a personal service shop that allows semi-permanent makeup? And so that was the point I was trying to drive on those two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think that would really, uh, provide some direction to the commission on what perhaps might need to be done with the tattoo shop when we consider the fact that there are permanent makeup folks across town.
Are already doing it, yeah.
So the clientele of tattoo shops has drastically changed in the last 50 years.
Yep.
So what's, is there a, a legal difference between a tattoo and permanent makeup?
There's no distinction between the licensing and the group that regulates those artists. They, they have the same license.
Uh, makeup, you have to have a tattoo license?
Yes, sir.
So, just strictly for legal reasons, it would seem we should have it in the same zones, right? So that it's fair, so that they should be in B1, B2, B3?
The, the brief education I got on a, uh, semi-permanent makeup is that it doesn't, uh, protrude as many layers of the skin.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, uh, only two layers, I believe, compared to four to five on a, on a regular tattoo. However, they're licensed the same, regulated by the same agency. So, um, in my mind, it's, it's the same. Even the person that approached me, but I asked her, helped me distinguish between the two, and we, we had difficulty getting there. So, I explained to her that we, we might have a solution as a result of action taken by the commission and the council.
Okay, so really, we were, there were two, those two we need to look at for sure, personal services and tattoo.
Correct.
Well, I've, I've got one that I'd really like to see looked at myself.
What?
Which is mobile home parks are exclusively industrial, and people should not be living, there should not be residences in industrial districts.
Yep, I agree.
So would you be removing it out of the industrial and just removing it altogether, or replacing it with another zone?
I, I would...
R3.
It's, it's multifamily detached living. What, what classification is that?
In my opinion, you'd have to make one.
So we make a B5?
Or an R4.
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 I would be fine with that, do an R4.
Yes, and I might support you, but that's a whole different conversation. That's creating a whole different zone, not reclassifying. We can do it, it's just gonna be a little more complicated than what we're doing right now.
But, uh, there, there is, there is no way... Homes should be in industrial.
I agree.
So, period.
Is, and this is a question for staff, um, are they permitting any new, uh, mobile homes into the city, either industrial?
A new mobile home park in the city has a very specific set of zoning requirements in order to actually develop in the city. So it's, it's a much more exhaustive list now, um, and that's what I was trying to pull up.
Oh, okay.
And so it is currently only for industrial zoning. And the mobile home ordinance is quite lengthy and goes as far as, uh, the number of units that can be on the property, street signs, they have to have the same subdivision improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, uh, street improvements, name the streets.
But nobody individually into, like, if they bought a, just one lot inside the city?
No, sir.
They couldn't do that?
No, sir.
But if we were to move it to an R, into a residential classification, then could they?
There's a specific process to, when you start looking at changing the zoning districts as far as the notice process and how that's, that's approached. And so, if the commission wants to pursue that, I would, I would ask that you give staff direction on that to do the research and bring that back maybe at a future date, because that's, that's going to be a little larger than the focus before us tonight, which is to look at some of the permitted uses, so...
I think maybe focus on the two, and then maybe we let staff kinda get some information together.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate, Mr. Blotter, I, I know that's important to you, and I think it's something we need to look at, uh, but I, I would not want us to go back to council with not having fully researched that area.
Yeah. It's, it's not important to me personally, it's just the fact that where someone lives should not be an industrial zone.
I agree, 100%. So, Steve, if you could take that back and to research what we can do with that, what other cities do with that, um, it can't be an industrial. It, it can't and shouldn't. So what, what does that look like? Do we put it in R3, do we create a new zone, R4? What do other cities do?
What, what kind of options?
But let's not put them with the industrial.
Wait a minute, so that's your, in my opinion, I can stay where it is. So that's your opinion, that it shouldn't be there, and I think that it should be there.
You think it should be there?
I think it's a, well, no, I think that, I think that it creates a huge detriment to anybody else who's around it and property values, and that's...
I, I agree.
And so therefore, that's what industrial does as well. And so that doesn't mean that industrial, just because it's industrial, doesn't mean it's gonna be around industrial products. It means it has to be zoned industrial, meaning that person has to come to us and say, this is gonna be industrial, and therefore, I have three acres, I can make a mobile home park. That's what it's saying.
Before you got on the commission.
It's not saying it's gonna be a wreck, a wrecking ball yard next to it. It's not saying that.
But, but it could, if it's all industrial.
It could be.
Not if they had their own two acres, and they were developing their own two acres into a mobile home park.
But if we were gonna do that, why not have a new zoning for them, R4?
I, I, I'm not opposed, but...
I'm just saying, if it's industrial, it all, it allows for all of it. It could be anywhere.
Yeah, it does.
Go ahead.
Based on what he said about all of the physical requirements for the construction of a mobile home park, that puts it out of the price range of the people who would move into a mobile home park. A mobile home park is low-cost housing, period. That's the reason for the existence of mobile home parks, is because it is low-cost housing, people that can't afford anything more expensive. So consequently, it's low-value because it is low-cost.
That is, that is...
But it's, it's still a residence. It's still people living there, and if you have a mobile home park in an, in an industrial zone, they can sell out to a concrete batch plant. They can sell out to a steel mill. And do you want a steel mill, uh, next to, uh, commercial zoning where they're selling golf carts?
I agree 100%, we have industrial right in the middle of town.
Yep. Yep. Well, that's because of the revenue.
Okay, so shall we, shall we cable this? Let's let Steve do some research, bring it back to us for next month, and we can, we can really, you know, get, get fisticuffs with, uh, the whole mobile. But let's, let's deal right now with what we need to deal with, which is tattoo, personal service. Is there, Steve, you mentioned that there maybe was some other things that you wanted to look at tonight, other than that, or was that our main priority?
We really need to go back with some direction on, on those first two. So if we wanna expand the districts on those two, I, I would really like us to maybe come to a conclusion on that. And then, um, based on the time we have, we, we might look at a couple others.
Okay.
Um, the, the council did ask that we try to bring back five.
Okay.
Okay, so on the tattoo shops, the question I have is, could we create it some designation to where it's not under personal service, and it just be listed as a tattoo?
It is.
It is.
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir, on, on the last page.
Oh, okay, there we go. About halfway down.
So, basically, if we just move it over, out of industrial, we would be putting it on the same par as?
Correct.
Personal service, but beauty shop?
We did B1, B2, B3.
And DT.
And DT.
And industrial.
B1, 2, and 3.
It can still be industrial, right? If they wanna put a tattoo shop in industrial, we could recommend to leave it there.
Yeah.
Sure. The only thing is, if we wanted to be consistent, should we move the, uh, personal service into industrial as well? Allow for it.
I'm okay with that. It depends, let me ask Steve this question. It depends on where the council direction goes. Are they trying to, and I'm good with either way, sometimes you don't put all those things in industrial, all the way across, because we had this problem once upon a time where industrial just had every single use. And it was like, well, we'll just zone everything industrial. And so you, if the council's trying to shy away from that, then we try to say, no, you can't be industrial, you have to be in B3. Then that gives us a little more power and flexibility, if you will, to zone properly versus throwing everything in industrial and then everything industrial. I don't know what the council's direction is, but...
So, we know that the, what's driving this exercise is that one particular case relating to the, the tattoo shop, and, and I think there was a lot of reservation about denying that. So the question is, industrial maybe, or industrial only is, is possibly too restrictive, but where does it become not restrictive enough? And so that's, that's why they're wanting the commission to review this. And so, the council didn't really try to, to dictate what comes out of the commission as far as recommending... And so that's, that's why they're wanting the commission to review this. And so, the council didn't really try to, to dictate what comes out of the commission as far as recommendations. But I think they do want us to look at, you know, where's the balance? Is it too restrictive? And, and do we want to, and we, at the same time, be cautious and not open the door too much and make it to where, like, to your point, industrial's everything. Yet, uh, some things that should be industrial end up being in, in a B one district, so.
Yeah.
I, I know I'm not giving you an answer to that.
I agree, because when we went through this twenty years ago, the reason why we ended up with industrial where we are in a lot of places, because industrial was the most powerful, because it encompassed everything. So people just came in and asked for industrial, if they got it, they got it. Then they could do whatever they wanted in there and versus, that's why I was asking. So we're good, okay? That's why I'm hesitant about keeping it in industrial.
I think, go ahead and pull it out of industrial, just for the sake of, if, if somebody was to come back in and say, well, this is owned industrial and then something, and this is theoretical. And they come back and say, well, tattoo parlors are zoned industrial, but they're also in B one, B two, B three, why can't we be in B one, B two, B three? It, it can become a legal liability theoretically.
Well, I, I see another area that probably needs to be consolidated in a certain, uh, it's all over the map. First page, about a third of the way down, bakery and confectionery.
Okay, before we move on, let's, let's make some decisions about tattoo.
Okay.
That's actually one of them.
So, here's the question, what, what is the sharp distinction between B one, B two, and B three? Because if you're just looking by location, I mean, they're all over. Okay, so B one is neighborhood business, B two is retail and commercial, and B three is central business. And then DT, okay, B four's private club, DT's. So, what, what was the, what was that, what was the zone of that place that wanted to be the tattoo shop?
B one.
Was it B one?
Yes, ma'am.
A neighborhood business. So do we think tattoos are appropriate for a neighborhood business?
No.
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 No, okay. So, so we're, do we think?
B two.
Do we think salons that do tattooing are appropriate for a neighborhood business, if we're trying to be consistent?
No.
But they currently are.
Look at how many salons are in them.
I, I know, it's a weird zoning thing, but I understand why they are, because hair salons, but to answer your question, they, it's fine, I mean, you don't know what they're doing inside there, I don't care either way, but it's.
Are they listed separately as far as?
Yeah, they're, they're salons. We could talk about percentage of work, you know what I mean, like what percentage of their. Profits.
That's, well, that's what I'm thinking.
Because like if twenty percent of what they do is makeup, tattooing, or something, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to think about like how they, how they were.
Yeah, that's messy. All kinds of things and.
It, it's gonna be a bigger headache if you try to regulate it, because we'll have to ask somebody to actually regulate it.
Well, it's a hair-splitting thing when we're talking about comparing a tattoo shop to a beauty shop or barber shop. It's, it, it, that, that particular service is a very, very small percentage of what they probably actually do on a daily basis.
Is it considered permanent makeup?
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Rather than a tattoo, it's, it's actually called permanent makeup instead of tattoo, correct?
Yeah, like, like a woman whose, whose eyebrows are faded, she'll go in and get them darker, she'll have them.
If council was to define what permanent makeup could be considered, then we could create a whole.
Maybe, maybe what we should do is leave the salons where they are and let's just say tattoos are not in B one, but can be in B two, B three, and DT. What about that?
I think so at the right now, because we don't, the, the business state needs have changed, but I'm, I'm with you.
For sure, it should be in B two, right?
Yes, B two, kind of problem with that.
If we want to, if this needs to come in recommendations and different motions, so they can vote separately? Steve?
Um, I believe that may be a good approach, yes, sir.
So then they can pick and choose whichever.
Yes, sir.
So, so we're gonna say tattoo, do we need to do a vote on this?
I, we'll have to have some kind of motion, but as far as downtown, I don't know if I put it there.
Okay, so down, you're not sure about downtown?
It's on the square.
Yeah, there, there was one that, I don't know, that could be a cool funky thing that brings people in.
It, it says work session, so that's what's weird thing, we're in work session.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we're saying B two, B three, and DT loosely what we're saying right now.
Let's, let's make this easy. I make a motion.
Yeah.
To recommend to council.
Yep.
To approve tattoo shop in B two, removed from industrial, and place in B two and B three.
And not DT?
I just, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, great.
Uh, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we place tattoo parlors in DT, recommend to council to place tattoo parlor in DT.
You're crafty. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that one, I prefer that one.
Okay, anybody want to talk about it?
I think, I don't, there's one, there was one there in the past, it, it had no harm done, foul.
I agree.
It looked good.
I, I don't know how they got zoned in there with this.
I, I don't know, but I think it was further to the DT portion, I think it used to be just B three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, so two opposed, one, two, three, four, so, so it goes forward. No, wait.
Yeah, it goes forward.
We got six.
We've got six, yes. Yeah, so we, that goes forward. Okay, so that's taken care of.
Great.
We're gonna leave salons as is, the, the, uh, personal shop, personal service shop.
Hold on, personal service shop?
Are we, are we good with it as is, where it's across the board, but it's not in industrial?
It's, is, can we make a list of things we want to come back and have more future discussion?
Sure.
Like that one?
So not, not make a decision on that one, right?
I mean, and somebody make a motion.
So what do they want to do with personal service?
It's up, it's up to.
That's what I'm saying, we can decide now, or we can come back and add it to the mobile home conversation.
Was there reason to move it?
The only question would be if we're feeling weird about the tattoos, I think it's fine.
You know, here's the problem, it says it's service shop and we don't call out beauty shop, barber shop in the law, and it's all grouped into one.
Right.
You can separate them out if you so desired, but that's a whole nother.
And what is the law?
I mean, I could be wrong, speaking for Steve, but I think that's right. Then you have to define what a beauty shop is, you have to define what a barber shop is, you have to do all these definitions.
The, the border, the border between a beauty shop and a barber shop is, uh, is very blurred anymore anyhow, so.
Yeah, I know.
But it is a state licensing.
What's that?
The state license those, as far as what a beautician is versus a barber.
Yeah, a beautician can do more than a barber can.
Do you guys think this needs to change, or can we leave it as is for now?
What's that?
The personal service shop.
Yeah, I, I'm fine wherever it is currently.
Does, you guys want to change, you need to make a motion.
I, I think it ought to be included in R one as well.
Keep it the same, there's no need to make a motion, it's already on paper.
Absolutely.
Residential?
I don't know, I think.
Sure.
All right, we good?
I've, I've lived in a lot of towns where, uh, where the, where the, uh, the housewife has the, has a chair in the, in the back room.
Home occupation guidelines prohibit the generation of traffic into residential area, so. If, if we're going to go that direction, then there'd be an ordinance change that also occur.
All right, so we're gonna leave personal as is, do we want to look at anything else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, what?
Bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast are only allowed downtown?
Bed and breakfast boarding halfway, there's two of them.
There's two of them, yeah. A bed and breakfast is only allowed downtown, it's not in B one, B two, or?
Sure is.
Well, there's, with the one right above it, bed and breakfast slash boarding house, so how, how do we have it in two different?
Well, wait a minute.
Good question.
Bed and breakfast slash boarding house and then just bed and breakfast.
Well, we could remove the bed and breakfast off boarding house and just leave it as boarding house.
Yeah, and, and that was part of the, the point being made, putting this in table format is.
It's a lot of.
Or just remove bed and breakfast altogether and then it could carry over into that other category.
If you pull up, um, on the, you have to go to the website, it's gonna tell you what that is. I'm assuming that's a long-term stay versus a bed and breakfast is more of a hotel, I'm assuming.
A boarding house? Yeah.
All right, so what am I searching?
I don't know that, you'd have to go to the city of Steenville, and it would tell you that legal definition of what they're defining that is, but we can group them up if we want, or. I'm with you, though, um, I think it should, a bed and breakfast should be in B one at a minimum.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a neighborhood business district.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's weird that it's not, so.
I don't know who wants to go to a bed and breakfast next to Walmart, but who might say no?
Well, right now, it only exists in downtown.
And I think it should be in B three, too.
B two and B three, and remain in DT. So it would just not be in the commercial area, yeah, I would agree with that.
I don't know about, I don't know about the others.
How we define boarding house?
So I get.
Bicycle sales and rental is only allowed.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Cliff.
So how are we defining boarding house? Have you found? Steve, do you know boarding house, I, I assume it's a long-term, you know, a border.
Yeah, boarding house, uh.
So.
Is almost multiple night.
Actually, the definition is bed and breakfast or a boarding house.
Okay, so we can combine them.
A building or other, a building other than a hotel or motel where compensation and pre-arrangement for definite periods, meals or lodging and mills. Are provided for three or more persons, but not exceeding twenty persons.
Okay, so if we combine them and make them B one, B three, DT, that's what we're thinking about. So, somebody want to make a motion on that?
What were the, what were the levels, B one, B three?
B three and DT.
Okay, we'll, we'll mess over council on this one. I recommend, uh, I'm, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to recommend to council to combine bed and breakfast with bed and breakfast boarding house and add DT zoning to bed and breakfast boarding house.
Second.
Okay, so you're doing it separately?
I did it all at one time.
Wait, no, because you need to add, well, if we're all in combined, then.
We're combining the two.
So they're all B, so that they're B one, B three, and DT, correct?
And then combine boarding house with boarding house.
Gotcha.
Just make them all one.
Okay.
One category.
All right, uh, do I have a second?
Done.
Brian, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that goes forward.
Now bicycles.
What about bicycles?
Bruce, what do you have to say about bicycles?
Well, it's only downtown.
Yeah.
That's weird. I love that anybody's.
We're, we're trying to corner the market on bicycle sales downtown, man.
Forget Walmart.
Bicycle.
That's so weird.
Why? I mean, I guess if you wanted to take a.
Obviously Walmart is in violation of zoning laws then by selling bicycle.
You make that one. What, B one, B two, B three, I think, and DT.
For bicycles?
B one, B two.
I'm just, I'm just talking out loud.
What's up? Wait a minute.
Well, yeah, why should it be?
Oh, B two, not B, B one, B two, I'm sorry.
You're saying B two and B three.
No, B two, B three, DT.
Okay, so little Johnny can't fix his community's bicycles?
He can, but not next to somebody's house.
Okay.
You want to make a motion, Todd?
No.
All right.
Somebody else want to make a motion? Brian?
I recommend to council that we move bicycle sales and rental to B two, B three, and also include DT.
Okay, do we have a second?
Uh, I would like to amend that.
Wait.
You got a second and then you make an amendment.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a, a first and a second, and now can we take an amendment? All right, wait, do we have to vote? No?
No.
We, discussion.
Amendment.
Yeah, they can put an amendment.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, I would amend it to be B one as well. Bicycle's a neighborhood business, I mean, you have it on a corner.
Yes, sir. Yes.
I have the original motion, motion to amend, motion to amend will need to be affirmed and then the amended motion.
That's correct.
All right, so you made a motion.
That's correct.
To amend, we need to vote on that and then vote on.
Vote on it, because once you vote on it, it passes, so you have a motion to amend, you have a second on that motion?
Yeah.
You have the original motion.
Yep.
We've got the original motion.
You guys second on it?
Yep.
Okay, then you have a motion to amend?
Yep.
Do you have a second on it?
The way you see, he's telling us what it is.
Okay, so you'll need a second on whether you're motion to amend it, so what are the motions?
Well, I make a motion to amend.
Yeah, but you have to tell us what it is.
But he needs a second, he, to, to add B one.
And what's the main, what's the amendment?
To add, add bicycle to B one. Y'all just said B two and B three.
Right.
You have a second?
So.
Add it to B one as well?
Is there a second?
That's what we're waiting for, right now.
Okay, I think it's gonna die.
I would be okay with that.
Okay, Justin, Justin says he's okay with.
So then we vote on the amendment?
So now you're voting on the amendment to add B one.
Yes, ma'am.
And only voting on that.
Only voting on the adding to B one.
Okay, all right.
Discussion on that part.
To the, to the original motion, exactly.
So we're, we're just voting on that, so discussion on that, so, uh, Justin Bruce saying, yeah, it's cool being in a neighborhood, right? And, and you guys say no?
Well, I say no because it's, it, there's no telling what these things can turn into and you're living next to a bicycle shop and has two hundred and fifty bicycles.
He's right.
That's what happens in Steenville.
Because you could have somebody down in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
Move in, buy the house, and then not live in the house, but work out of the house.
No, they'd have to rezone it, though.
Well, they have to rezone to a B one, but B one is neighborhood friendly and I don't think two hundred and fifty bikes is somebody's, is beef, is, in my opinion, is, is friendly to the neighborhood. Sure, if they had five bikes, that's one thing.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the amendment to add B one, uh, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Aye.
All right, so that does not go forward. Now back to the original, which is, um, uh, recommend to council adding bicycle sales into B two and B three and remaining in DT. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that goes forward, council. Now we've hit our requisite five, are we good?
We only did three.
No, we got, we did the bed and breakfast, well, that was kinda.
That's one.
Bicycles.
That's two, and tattoo shops.
And the tattoo shop, well, I was, I was finding a few things, all right, all right.
Bakery and confectionery shops, we've got six, six different selections here.
Hold, hold on.
Wait a minute.
Before we go in order and all here on yours, can we make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Book, card, and gift stores is only in downtown? I'm just going in alphabetical order here.
That's so weird. And also, like Hastings was.
Books and cards and gifts.
Yeah, okay, here, instead of hitting things randomly, perhaps we should start at the top.
That's what I'm saying, we just go in alphabetical.
Rather than just like.
I think councils want you all to look more at the ones you all see frequently, so if there's someone there that you all see frequently, and let's start with the common problems instead of things.
Yeah, I, I agree, what?
Bakeries was one that was actually mentioned at the committee meeting, so perhaps we could act on that one. I think you might, could address some of these multiple references.
Yeah, I don't.
And then, uh, if we have any, any others that are common before the P and Z, we could, we could.
Retail.
Well, one thing, um, help them, has come up with us, remember, we, didn't we have a, a weird zoning issue with the whole club not too long ago where they?
Four of them.
That might be B, before me.
Somebody wanted to put a gym somewhere.
Hold on, that was over, in the downtown district.
And they wanted to rezone to like industrial or something.
No, it was, uh, residential business or something.
Yeah, well, it's in B two, B three, industrial and DT, so it's only not in neighborhood business.
You got retail sales only and retail only. But this is, well, confectionery.
Steve, what were, what, do you have something that you want to look at?
Well, we did specifically discuss the bakeries.
The bakeries, okay.
Committee last night.
Okay.
If, if gyms have been something that have been an, an issue, then I, I would certainly encourage you to look at those.
I'm, I'm in no hurry. Let's look at bakeries.
Wow, they're all the same, just in every other.
Yeah, so why do we have six of them?
Products for retail only.
Wholesale and distribution, I understand that.
Bakery and confectionery.
All right, so you got.
So weird.
Bakery and confectionery, retail sales only, and bakery and confectionery, products for retail only.
Well, basically, they can be.
We need to combine a bunch of these.
Or just.
Collapse it into one?
But then if you were to put them in a B one, you could have Mrs. Berry.
Maybe create three.
Wholesale and distribution has to be separate.
Yeah, you can.
We have to have a, we have to have one that's for retail and one that's for wholesale, don't you think? And then get rid of.
I don't think they should be in B one.
Collapse everything.
Because there's too many, too many words.
About bakery and confectionery manufacturing.
Which, which one?
Well, can't wholesale and distribution cover that?
Is there-
Yeah.
Any specific definitions as to why these are, like they are, as far as-
We ought to add, add manufacturer, or whatever you want to call it.
Because it seems like there's more information that we're not seeing here, as to why that was done that way.
Well, let's just fix it.
Yeah, we got bakery and confectionery products for retail only, and then we got bakery and confectionery shop, products for retail only, and they're totally different.
Let's, let's collapse, and let's say there's one for retail, one for wholesale and distribution, right? Aren't those the two major categories? So, can we?
I would, I would posit that a small bakery as opposed to a large bakery, that we have different classifications based on the square footage of the shop.
That's getting complicated.
Yes, it is. You know, that, that little bakery shop there at the corner, Ollie and Fry?
Yes.
That's a residential zoning. They're, they're non-compliant.
They've been there forever.
You talking about a lot of those?
I'm not there today.
Um, I don't know, I-
They've got good chicken spaghetti. Bruce, don't be picking on that. They got good chicken-
I'm not picking on them at all.
Well, just leave them alone. They've got good chicken spaghetti.
I don't want to get into square footage issues, guys. Do you? I mean, that just seems too complicated. I like the idea of just doing a retail and then a wholesale and distribution. We have our big manufacturers, we got little guys. Big guys and little guys.
Yeah, you don't actually manufacture bread. What do you do?
Cakes.
You bake it?
Anything that's baked. There's no definition for it in our, in our zoning licenses.
I don't see a definition.
Right.
Which is not really good, but-
Right. So, I mean, Mrs. Barrett isn't going to set up a plant here next week, but-
That'd be nice.
I wouldn't mind.
All right, can we agree that we've got two, two basic categories?
Yeah.
Are we agree, we got a wholesale, you know, big wholesale manufacturers, and then we got the little retailer, right? Are we agreed upon those two categories? So, let's start with the retail side of it, the smaller shop. Where do those belong?
B2 and the whole.
I think B1 would be okay.
You lied to us.
B1?
They got that changed, because the original map that I have, that I have-
B1, I don't know, across the board, I think, except industrial. It's an industrial.
But everything used to be industrial, so that's-
I would say B1, B2, B3.
So, you're saying to combine everything but wholesale and distribution?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's what I think. If somebody's got-
Wholesale and distribution is properly in the industrial right now.
Yeah, and that, that I think would stay where it is in industrial.
Right, and we collapse the other five into one-
And put it everywhere.
And put it across the board.
Except industrial.
Well, would you put it in B4?
And not in B4.
And not B4.
B4, just, oh, okay.
B4 is private, right?
Are you making that a motion, Bruce?
I don't know, you may have-
All right, somebody make a motion.
May have alcohol in the, in the confectionery, you know.
But it cooks out.
It's no worse than anything by the time you eat it, Bruce. Don't you know?
Bruce, are you making that a motion, or no?
You didn't make a motion.
I make a motion that all five of these categories with, or all of these categories, with the exception of wholesale and distribution, be collapsed into one and be in B1, B2, B3, and downtown.
Second? Anybody? Justin's second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
What? Come on.
Shouldn't be in B1. That's okay, it passed. We can disagree. We don't have to all get along and be happy and merry.
Okay, all right, moving on.
We're still going to function.
Okay.
We need, now we need a motion for the other, for the wholesale, right?
No, no.
It's going to stay there.
That's number four.
I accepted them.
Okay, guys.
So, we've got bed and breakfast.
We need one more. Was there any hot topics out there?
Bicycles.
Anything that the council, Stacy, anything you can think of this?
Well, if we're all out, then we can talk about books and card and gift stores.
No, let's start at the top. Let's work our way through.
Day spa.
Days, let's just start at the top, go with her. Let's just go-
Going back to what council suggested.
I make a motion that we put day spa into B2.
What is a day spa?
These all need to be agreed.
Somebody that goes in and gets a massage and lays on hot locks and-
Yeah, why is it just in B2?
Madam Chair, I would, I would venture to guess that the combination of some of these and combining, combining these, I think, is probably going to accomplish the direction from council. So, if-
We're good.
Commission's had a long night. If y'all are comfortable where you are, we can, we can probably go back to council with what we've accomplished.
Let's do that.
If you're not, if you want to keep working, then we can certainly do that, so.
So, no, I think, I think that, here's the thing wrong with this, is we can do it two ways, Madam Chair, in the future. And we're all tired after a meeting, and we don't know how long they're going to go. We either need to come in here for a work session and pound this out in an hour or two, or pack every 10 minutes, have 10 minutes at the end of every meeting, 15 minutes, and we say, hey, we're going to work on this. But that's your discretion to recommend to us and say, hey, because there's two ways of doing it, and it could take all day, and you say, hey, let's, let's play a two-hour meeting and be done with it.
Who's open to the idea of a two-hour meeting and be done with it? Who wants to do that?
I think one thing, if I may, the council, I think, has some, can't really speak for the council, so maybe I better rephrase that. We know that there's a comprehensive plan review coming up, and so I think there's, generally speaking, some reservation to get too far into the weeds when we know that we're going to be looking at it as in a totality approach.
We may be wasting our time.
Now, we can certainly go back to the council with what the commission would like to do as far as how to tackle this. I think that would be good information to bring back if, if the commission desires, but I don't know that they really want us at this point to go down the road of trying to rework this whole table. But we can certainly bring, bring that recommendation back to them if that's what you want to do. I'm just, with that comprehensive plan out there lingering, I don't know that it would be the best use of our time right now.
I would normally agree with you on almost everything's sake, except this, these uses are never going to change.
They, they do need to be addressed, absolutely.
If I can get to that, we all have a list that we're looking at, and we can kind of look at it. We can have Steve add a similar item to the next month's agenda, and y'all can all kind of list your priorities, list your thoughts, and it may go quicker than Steve looking at it line by line without ever having seen it before, and so.
Okay, good, good.
And we'll have a chance to kind of prioritize what was- How about we all choose one? How about that? Like, I don't want, let's not be overwhelmed, like, for next meeting. And then, you know, not look at things like, you know, things you want, so that way you think it's addressed in a comprehensive plan, but just look at the big ones, and maybe, if you're reading through the list, it rings a bell that, oh, we see this almost happened, maybe we need to discuss this one.
To Stacy's point, I think what you accomplished tonight, having this kind of dropped on you and kind of figuring out how we're going to approach each one, I think y'all, y'all did a great job getting what we accomplished, accomplished, and we'll eventually get there.
When you put that in the agenda, I knew what was going on.
I do like your approach. If we do it every, every meeting, 10, 15 minutes, and everybody brings one, we might bring the same one, and we just keep doing it until we're done.
Yeah, we just hit the biggies.
Yeah, because it's not going to take that long once we actually look at it.
And if we all take a lot of time and really think about what's important. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, that's, that's my, always.
Did we ever get the other motion?
Which one?
Don't know that we ever closed the meeting.
Yeah, we did bakery. Okay.
Okay, I guess, is that right?
Yeah, what? No, we didn't. We kept it open, because we've been doing motions, so the meetings have been, we have adjourned.
Yeah, I think it needs to, need to take action to adjourn. I don't know that we did earlier.
We did not adjourn earlier.
No, that's right.
We kept it open for them.
So, that's why Cliff made the recommend, or made the motion. And I'll second your motion.
Well, thank you, Bruce.
Excellent.